All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, July seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, and ask if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington? Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Labads? Trustee Baldino?
Here.
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
Trustee Tanalia?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we do have four sites to approve tonight. The first is from the village board meeting of June twenty, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any changes or passes?
I move to approve the village board meeting for six twenty, two thousand and twenty-three.
There's a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Baldino. No any further questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from that same evening, June twenty, two thousand and twenty-three. Any changes or passes? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval of the committee of the whole meeting from June twentieth, twenty-three?
Second.
Motion by trustee Schwingback, second by trustee Grassi. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And next, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Any changes or passes?
Pass.
Passed by trustee Baldino?
I move to approve the committee of the whole minutes for June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Shirley. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And finally, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from July ten, two thousand and twenty-three. Any changes or passes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the committee of the whole minutes of July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Schwingback. Any saying from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We then move on to the approval of the accounts payable, and we have two warrant registers to approve tonight, so I'll call on trustee Bertucci.
Move approval of the warrant register for the check date June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of three million, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Tanalia. Questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. And trustee Bertucci?
I'll also move approval of the warrant register for the check dated July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of three million, four hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, second by trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. There are no recognitions or presentations tonight, so we'll move on to public hearings. And we do have a public hearing to conduct tonight on the draft two thousand and twenty-three annual action plan and proposed substantial and other amendments to the two thousand and nineteen annual action plan, including the community development block grant annual budget. So I would need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion to open the public hearing by trustee Tanalia, second by trustee Baldino. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So we are now in the public hearing. Mr. Recklaus?
I will let our director of community development and planning give a little presentation on where things are at.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As mentioned, this is the second public hearing. The first one was in June, and then the annual action plan and the amendments to the two thousand and nineteen plan went on, available for public comment for thirty days. And then this is the required second public hearing to get any additional public input that anybody may have. The only input that we have received in that thirty days were a few emails from some of the agencies thanking the village for their continued support and funding. The annual action plan does include the village's CDBG budget for the next fiscal year, and we are on the federal fiscal year for the CDBG program, so that starts October first and runs through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. So within that budget, we have four hundred and eleven thousand dollars made up of our annual entitlement amount, some carryover funds, and then estimated program income. And last meeting in June, we talked about all the different agencies and how to suggest funding that, and that was included in the annual action plan for the thirty-day public comment period. And then there are also some changes to the two thousand and nineteen annual action plan for our CDBGCV funds. Those were COVID funds that we received from the federal government, and there were some unexpended funds, both by various agencies and the village themselves. So the proposal here is to reallocate some of those funds to Journeys and Northwest Compass, splitting the thirty-one thousand dollars evenly amongst those two agencies. And then an additional fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars that was unexpended from the small business zero-interest loan or forgivable loan program. And we're recommending funding that, providing that to Clearbrook for their employment center that they're building on Central. So at this point, it would be appropriate to open it up and see if there's any additional public comments. Both Nora Boy and myself are available for questions. And then later in the agenda will be the time under report to the village manager for actual adoption of these plans, and then they would get submitted to HUD for their forty-five-day review period before we could start implementing and drawing down on those funds. So both Nora and I are available for any questions, if there are any.
Thanks, Mr. Perkins. So at this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board under public comment under this public hearing for the reasons so stated. Anybody in the audience? All right, seeing none. Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Close the public hearing?
Yes, that would be appropriate, no?
Okay. I would then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing? Second.
By trustee Baldino, second by trustee Tanalia, I think. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So we'll take up that item formally under legal.
It's under report of the village manager, I believe.
Or the village manager, okay.
Thank you.
Anything further from the staff before we move on on that? So we will then move on to citizens to be heard. And I do have one blue card from an individual who wants to address the board on items not on the agenda, and that's Lori Taylor. Lori, welcome.
Hi, I'm Lori Taylor, and I'm a resident of Arlington Heights, Illinois for over thirty-five years. I can't believe it myself. And I came here to the meeting tonight to say thank you. Thank you to all the trustees, thank you to Mayor Tom Hayes, thank you to Mr. Bertucci. Thank you, guys, everybody here, your department heads, everybody over here. You guys run a village very, very, very fiscally responsibly. And you don't get enough thank yous. I'd love to start a campaign in the village to have everybody say thank you to you, whether they email you or whether they see you on the street and say, thank you. So you know you're appreciated. One thing that I find amazing especially is the fact that you guys do not go and allocate any money whatsoever for any projects that have no commitment behind them. Thank you. I know my tax dollars are being spent wisely and looking at the budget. It really is. So I hope everybody starts saying thank you, and that's it. Have a great evening, everybody.
All right, thanks, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, can anybody tap that? All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board on items not on the agenda?
Did you send her her check?
She's not saying that just because she's my neighbor. All right, anybody else in the audience? Seeing none, we will close then the citizens-to-be-heard portion of the agenda and move on then to old business. And we do have three items to report out from our committee of the whole meeting of June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, and they're all financial matters. And so, Mr. Recklaus, can I ask you to just give a elevator summary of what we did that evening and what we're about to pass this evening?
Absolutely. Back on the twenty-sixth, we did our semi-annual review of the village's finances and developed what we call our budget ceilings and kind of our operating overview for the village. And this runs up, this is what we use as a basis to develop the budget for two thousand and twenty-four. We had another very solid year, and the village is once again recommending that we will have a zero percent increase in our property taxes. This will be the fifth year in a row that we've been in a position to do that. Again, like we always say, we do not think we'll necessarily be in a position to do that again next year, but we look at it every year very carefully. We try very hard to be fiscally responsible. The other thing that we're recommending, that I believe is noteworthy for most folks watching at home, is we are recommending the elimination of vehicle stickers for two thousand and twenty-four. That does not mean that if you haven't bought your two thousand and twenty-three vehicle sticker that you're off the hook. You still have to buy it for twenty-three, but if the recommendation goes through as part of the two thousand and twenty-four budget, you will not need to purchase them for two thousand and twenty-four. Again, we've seen an increase in a lot of our revenues, such as sales tax and state income tax. That's helping us rely less on some of those locally generated revenues, and we try to be very good stewards of those revenues and try to keep our expenditures as flat as possible. And that's what we discussed that evening, and the board is essentially approving the overall direction for us to continue to develop a budget under those parameters.
All right, thank you, Mr. Recklaus. That's a really good summary and really good information for our residents to learn and know that, as Ms. Taylor said, we do try our best to be fiscally responsible and prudent and spend your and my tax dollars very wisely. And so I think we have a history of doing that, and I think it's a result, what we're going to pass tonight is a result of a lot of hard work by a lot of different people. And so thank you to all the team members over here, led by our village manager, Randy Recklaus, and our finance director, Tom Keeney. Not the result of any short-term work, but long-term work over many, many months and even years to get to this point. And so we very much appreciate all the hard work from everybody involved in getting us to this point in our budgetary process. So with that, I will have the individuals trustees who made the motions report them out. And the first one was by trustee Bertucci.
Mayor, I will move, as I did on June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, that the board accept the twelve-month period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two annual financial report.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Tanalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. I just want to say, as I have for the past five years, this is great news, and I hope Mr. Plasek puts it on the front page for the Herald. These things don't happen by accident, and as the mayor eloquently pointed out, this is a labor of a lot of folks doing really good deeds here at our staff level. And Randy, did we have to cut the police budget at all?
We did not.
Fire department?
No, sir.
Public works?
Nope.
It's amazing. With everything going up in costs, we can still make this kind of stuff happen. So I'm just so thankful of everything that you guys have done. And up here, too, we try really hard to work as a team, so thanks. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, trustee Tanalia. Any further comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next motion was reported, was to be made by trustee Labads, and I'm going to go ahead and call on the seconder on that one. So trustee Grassi was the seconder, so Nicole, if you'd make that motion.
Yes, I move that the committee of the whole, wait, yes. Approve, no, the committee of the whole, please correct it. What am I?
The village board.
The village board, yes. I moved that the village board approve the two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement program update.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, seconded by trustee Schwingback. Questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And finally, trustee Bertucci.
I'll move that the village board approve the two thousand and twenty-four budget ceilings of eighty-eight million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred for the general fund and twenty-six million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred for the water and sewer fund.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Grassi. Questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That concludes then our old business. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? I do have a request from Mr. Moons to remove Consent Legal C, which is the item pertaining to the proposed ordinance for compliance tickets for bicyclists and penalties for improper use of parking facilities. Anybody else in the audience wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any members of the board wish to vote no or pass on any remaining items on the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the remaining items.
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Tanalia, seconded by trustee Baldino to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Roll call.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We'll then move on to new business, and we do have two items to consider tonight. The first is a request for a sign variation for Chipotle located at seven-eleven East Palatine Road. Is the petitioner present? Why don't you come forward if you would? And just tell us what you, give us your name and tell us what you're looking to do.
My name's Ken Busek from Design Group Signs. We're the sign contractor for Chipotle. And basically, we're looking for variants for an additional sign on the side of the building that faces, well, it doesn't face Palatine Road, but if you're going down Palatine Road, you're past the building before you even see the Chipotle. And then they have this little turnoff into that development. And when I ran that route, I was past the building, I slammed on the brakes because I seen the opening, and I snuck in there. And apparently, someone didn't make the turn because the sign was, there was a parking, some sort of parking sign, you know, laying on the side. So it's, this, in this particular side of the building, there's a frontage road that comes up, too. So if you don't, if you don't see the sign, you don't know that's the Chipotle. The entrance to that is, you pass that again, now you got to go out on Palatine Road and then come back around. So it's, it's kind of a safety issue, I think, if you've ever driven that particular area over there. And basically, we're just looking to put a sign up there for visibility and safety.
Okay, thank you. I will then turn it over to Mr. Perkins for a little more detailed explanation of what the signs will look like and where they are proposed to go.
Okay, thank you. This is probably one of the easiest sign variation requests that we've reviewed. They are seeking one wall sign on the west side of the building. It's a new outlot that's being developed at South Point, and with the development that's finally occurring there, it's really turning South Point Shopping Center around, which is, you know, a long time coming. We've been working really hard on that. As you can see on the exhibit here, the kind of circle represents approximately where the new outlot building is located. And there's one sign code compliant on the building facing immediately north on Palatine Road. And the request is for a wall sign on the west side of the building. So it does face the shared driveway between Chipotle and the other outlot building and the Olive Garden to the west. You can access the site from Ran Road as well, coming from the south. But going eastbound, you know, certainly, this would be the more visible of the two signs. This is the existing building, just opened maybe three or four weeks ago. The sign on the front facing north on Palatine Road. And then this exhibit shows on the bottom right, the proposed additional sign on the west side of the facade. So staff did not object to this sign variation. It's fairly consistent with other similar fast casual restaurants that have had a second wall sign in a similar situation. And there was just a recommendation from the design commission to just appropriately in the field, look at the placement of that sign on that wall face. So the design commission did recommend approval of the sign variation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Mr. Perkins. Questions from the board? Trustee Shirley?
Charles, I'm just curious, on the Ran Road side, I'm in favor of this. I'm not going to put up any fight, but on the Ran Road side, is there kind of like a menu sign for the shopping center just as you approach Chili's, where Chipotle will also get some exposure or not?
So there are three kind of development signs that have multi-tenant signs on them. There's one, if you can see the most, yeah, one at the kind of southeast corner. There's one approximately at this location by the driveway. And then there is another one, I think, at this, right on this corner here. I'm not sure whether Chipotle has the rights to have a panel on all of those signs. They probably do on one of the signs at least.
Just think it would be a good idea wherever they can, because then you can pick up traffic, you know, before it gets on Palatine, which is just, sometimes Palatine Road is very challenging.
Yeah, it is.
Especially if you're not familiar with the area, so.
And confusing with the frontage road system, too.
That's all I have.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, what is the will of the board? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve of the sign variation for Chipotle.
Second.
Motion to approve by trustee Grassi, seconded by trustee Shirley. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And one other item under new business, and that's the request for downzoning for the Hannah Historical Neighborhood located on Fremont and St. James and Chestnut and that area over by the historical museum and Veterans Memorial Park. And so the spokesman is the president of the association, Tom Gainer. Tom, welcome.
Hi, greetings, Mayor Hayes and board. So, yeah, I'm thrilled to be here. I'm Tom Gainer. My wife Sue and I have lived at two oh eight West Fremont for the last forty-one years, and I'm currently serving as the Hannah Board President and acting as the petitioner on behalf of the neighbors. So this has been a longstanding goal for Hannah, which is the Historic Arlington Neighborhood Association. And hoping that, as I understand from working with Sam Hubbard from Charles's organization, this is the first downzoning that he's at least aware of. So we're trying to go backwards in some ways, but moving the village forward, I believe, as a result. So I've got my clicker here. So just a quick bit of context, Hannah is the neighborhood north of the Central Business District. It's six hundred and twenty-five households. We've got bordered by St. James and Oakden, North and South, Walnut and roughly Arlington Heights. So St. James is our southern border, which has been an area of concern since Hannah was formed, actually, back in nineteen eighty. It was formed because there was concern for some tear downs on St. James, and some of the homes that we're considering for downzoning tonight were actually saved and not torn down and have been now restored, rehabilitated, and part of this terrific historic neighborhood. So this is the, we call the Hannah Triangle Neighborhood. So the red blocks there represent the seven residences that we're looking to go from R six multifamily to R three single family. And there's one pink one sort of in the corner there at Chestnut and St. James. That one's actually currently a duplex, which is zoned R six, and we're not looking to change that. We're not going to do anything to Juan's facility or his property. But it is affected by this downzoning, and I'll leave the details to Charles, who can way better explain the village's zoning particulars. We've got, I think, an amazing neighborhood here. As you know, we don't have a historic preservation district in the village, though we essentially have created this de facto one on a house-by-house basis. So as you know, Chapter Six of the Comprehensive Plan is about historic preservation. And I believe that what we're seeing is this neighborhood has decided that it's worthy of preserving, and the investments that the homeowners are making to maintain the historic integrity of the neighborhood, I think, is something that the village should really celebrate. It really makes this a special neighborhood. As Tom noted, that we've got the memorial park and the library and the historic district are all on the triangle. And I think the fact that we have neighbors that are of like mind with the Comprehensive Plan, I think, is really key. The concern that we've talked through at prior meetings was the step-down philosophy from B five to R six to R three. And what we have here is, we're proposing that we're going to go straight from B five to R three. So the other side of St. James is currently B five. We're not looking to affect that. The Eastman Project, which was recently not approved by the Plan Commission, the Plan Commissioners recommended that they actually work with Hannah to come up with a viable solution that kind of dealt with the sharp drop from B five to R three. And we've met with the developer back on July sixth, just a couple of weeks ago. And based on very collaborative discussions, I believe we've embodied what the Comprehensive Plan is looking for in terms of step-down without going from five, or B five to R six to R three. So we're proposing B five to R three, but I think we're meeting the spirit and the intent of what the Comprehensive Plan is looking for, as well as maintaining the spirit and intent of this very historic neighborhood. So I think we've done, I think, a good collaborative job working to make this a win on all fronts. I do want to share, since you put old house pictures in the Comprehensive Plan, I'm going to put them in my presentation as well. So here are some of the houses on the Hannah Triangle. And you can see they range well over a hundred years in age. And every one of them is owner, homeowner, and maintained and loved. So it's really a terrific neighborhood. We normally would have a bigger turnout of neighbors here, but they're on vacation together. I'm not sure who does that as a neighborhood, but they do that, right? So we have a whole number of us have decided to go to Glacier and Yellowstone as a neighborhood. So just to give you just a snapshot is how tight this neighborhood actually is. And before I hand it over to Charles, I just want to introduce the neighborhood. This is the houses on St. James, which would be right across the street from the B five. These are currently R six zoned, but you can see they've been single-family homes for the seventy-six to well over a hundred years that they've existed. So I think it's time, after all these years, to acknowledge that these homes really need to be identified as single-family. That's how it all sort of turned out. It was maybe obvious, you know, decades ago when the Comprehensive Plan was originally pulled together, but it's pretty clear now that people have voted with their time and energy and money to really make this a special neighborhood. So we do have Betsy and Jacob live at two oh eight. I don't know if, I think they were out as well, but if your residents are here, just raise your hand. So we'll introduce you guys as we introduce your houses. So Betsy and Jacob live at two oh eight West St. James. We've got Katie and Jason are at two oh six. Julie and Todd are at two oh four. Todd and his daughter are here. We've got Celeste and Eric are out of the country. Good for them, but they're having a great time, but they live at two hundred West St. James. Karen and John are at one sixteen. Karen's here, hi Karen. We've got Elena and Justin are on the Fremont Street next to the parking lot. There's Elena, thank you. And then Ryan and Samantha are the house around the corner on Chestnut. So those are the neighbors and the houses that we're talking about. And before I guess I turn it over to Charles, I just want to join the Lori Gushfest. And I worked with Michael Murdis when I was on the Arlington Heights. And I worked with Michael Murdis when I was on the Arlington Economic Alliance. Thank you for appointing me, Mr. Hayes. And he was terrific to work with. And he actually referred me to Sam Hubbard when we said, how do we go about doing the right thing for this neighborhood? And in working with Sam, it's just been a delight. He's been really supportive and helping navigate through the whole process and very, very professional. And maybe just to pile on, the Design Commission and the Planning Commission were also just amazingly professional. So we've got some terrific people that aren't even on payroll that are just, I think, totally bought into the mission of this town. So I think Lori would be proud of my pitch as well. So with that, I will let Charles take it from here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaynor. Thank you all, all the residents for joining us this evening as well. So, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gaynor. And it is unusual that we get a whole neighborhood all on the same page asking for a downzoning. We have had some downzonings in other neighborhoods. One maybe 20, 25 years ago at Pine and Belmont, but not everybody was in agreement or were looking for the same thing. So that's been a pleasure to work with them on this. So specifically what they're looking to do is requesting the rezone seven properties from R6, which is a kind of low density multifamily zoning district, to R3, which is a single family, one unit per lot zoning district. Changes in zoning height, the single family R3 is at 25 feet, the R6 allows up to 40 feet and obviously more units. There is one lot that would stay as R6, it's part of this application, and that would need some variations, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, because of the lot size. This shows the area highlighted in red that they're looking to rezone. It is on the kind of north fringe of downtown. The area highlighted in orange is the Village Bank and Trust property, and I'll talk a little bit about the impact that the change has on them. They're owned by Wintrust now. And then the Eastman Development that Mr. Gaynor mentioned, we've been in discussions with them and they've met with the neighborhood and they're starting up, talking about stepping the building back, even though code, you know, in the B5 would allow a zero lot line development. Very similar to the building right behind you, the 77 Evergreen when that came through, that's a step back. The first level is at the zero lot line, then it steps back, goes up five stories, and it steps back again before it goes up. Again, that's not required by code, but that was part of, you know, looking at the site planning, reducing the impact on the neighborhood. So that's what's happening on the Eastman Development. With this code change, it does impact the bank property in that the code says if a B5 district abuts a single family district by 50% or more of the frontage, then instead of a zero setback, there's a 20-foot setback requirement. So it does, that is the impact on the bank property. The bank did receive their normal public notice as part of the notification. We then sent their representative an email before the Plan Commission, you know, with the report, you know, outlining the specific impact that this zoning change would have. And then we followed up again after the Plan Commission with a letter and a follow-up again. And there has been some communication Friday and today, back and forth with the bank. I don't know whether they're here, but they understand the change. I don't want to speak for them, whether they're in favor or not, but they do at least understand the change and they have been notified. Just a little bit of history, on the left is the 1965 downtown plan, and it's been amended a number of times. Our current plan is a 2007 plan. So you can see in the area of St. James where the properties in question are, at that particular time, there was the thought that there would be some multifamily development on the north side of St. James. And then actually, prior to that, in 1964, the entire downtown was rezoned from B2 to B5. So downtown has been zoned B5 since 1964. And then in 1965, everything within 300 feet of the B5 district was rezoned to R6 or R7. So kind of trying to create a step down from the B5, you know, to a lower density residential and then the single family beyond that. The 1987 plan kind of shows that in yellow. It kind of shows that kind of fringe or buffer area, which is for the most part, you know, an R6 or an R7 type development. Over the years, people have, you know, improved their homes, the area hasn't developed. And so these are, you know, really nice historic homes. We have done a couple of studies over the years. One was by the Art Institute, they did a study of historic buildings. And then the State Historic Preservation Office also did one years ago and identified, you know, homes of quality or structures of quality. And there are quite a number in this area that are on both of those lists. And the 2015 comprehensive plan has a section on historic preservation, encouraging, you know, property owners to, you know, take the initiative to preserve their properties. You know, it does talk about other approaches, which are more forceful and mandated with various historic preservation ordinances. And the board did talk about that some time ago and felt that that was a difficult thing to implement, you know, from a staffing and cost effective point of view. So anyway, the exhibit here shows existing zoning. Everything in yellow would be rezoned to R3. The R6 portion here, the variation that's needed for this is for lot area. So a minimum lot area for an R6 district is one acre. This is .35 of an acre. It's got two units on there. Normally, we wouldn't recommend spot zoning. This is kind of reverse spot zoning because it's already zoned that way and we're kind of rezoning everything around it and leaving that as is. However, we don't object in this particular case because the rezoning request does meet some of the objectives of the comprehensive plan to preserve historic structures. And as everybody knows, more and more, we're seeing buildings getting torn down and replaced. That's an easy approach. It's much harder to preserve older structures. So we did support that variation and the rezoning request. This shows the existing comprehensive plan. It shows everything north of St. James as, you know, single family attached. That's, you know, consistent with the R6 zoning. And then this would be the proposed comprehensive plan, keeping the single family attached R6 here, and then changing these seven parcels to single family. You'll note this area, the village's parking lot, still designated single family on the comprehensive plan. And at some point, you know, there'd need to be a village initiated amendment to change that to public lands or government. So with that, Plan Commission voted six to one in favor of this approval, and staff recommended approval of it as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Mr. Perkins. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Schwingback?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make a comment. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. Charles, thank you again. I've spent time in this neighborhood. I'll go on record, I don't live anywhere near the Hannah neighborhood, but you guys are very proud of your neighborhood. I know just in the five years that I've been on the board, you've hosted a couple of forums where you've asked us to come and talk. So it's a neighborhood that wants to be informed and wants to know what's going on, and I certainly appreciate that. As you walk through your neighborhood, the homes are beautiful. And I know this was a big topic last September as I was talking to a lot of the neighborhoods when I ran for reelection. So I have no problem with this. I think it's a wonderful idea and I would certainly support this.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yeah, I agree with trustee Schwingback that it's a great project. And I was just noticing in reference to the Seoul Commissioner who had voted against it, I think that was only in the minutes and everything that I looked at, it was only because there wasn't dialogue yet with the bank to determine, although there was notices that went out, it was communicated that the bank did not, maybe did not even realize yet, but now that we know that that's the case, I would bet if there was a, that Commissioner had another chance to vote now that he knows that, he would probably have approved it too. So anyways, it sounds like it's a win-win and anybody who's affected has been talked to. And if they're not, the bank's not here, then we're good to go, as far as I'm concerned.
Trustee Grassi?
Thank you, I just have a brief comment. I'm in support of this downsizing, and I just think it's wonderful how this community has put together this kind of a coalition and community and board. I think it's wonderful, so I'm in full support. Thank you.
Trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. I am going to abstain from comment on this and pass on voting, only because I live in the Hannah District. And I think just to play it safe, it'd be best that I just step aside on this one.
Anybody else from the board? Anybody in the audience wish to address the board on this? And I'm specifically wondering if there is anyone from Village Bank and Trust here this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board. I am also in favor of this request, a very professional presentation, Tom, and everyone involved. And so we thank you for working together so efficiently and effectively with our village staff, and thank you for your presentation to both the Plan Commission and the Village Board. So with that, I'll ask if there's a motion. Trustee Schwingback?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the Hannah downsizing from an R6 multifamily dwelling district to an R3, one family dwelling district.
Second.
Motion by trustee Schwingback, second by trustee Shirley. Anything further from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, voice vote is okay, Greg?
Roll call, please.
Roll call on this, okay. Roll call.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia, I have you as a pass.
Yes, yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. All right, congratulations. And thank you all again for being part of the process and for being here this evening. So thank you all. There is no other new business, and so we'll move on to then the removed item under legal. And Mr. Reckless, why don't you tell us what that's about?
Sure. There's, this ordinance makes two changes to the municipal code. One relates to giving the police department the ability to write tickets, compliance tickets, to bicyclists. And really, the idea behind this is, I think as many of us know, we've had a number of folks that have violated bicycle rules, specifically in the El Fresco zone, you know, where folks are riding their bikes there, they're not, they're not supposed to. This will give our police officers the ability to not write a state traffic ticket, which would require them to go to court, but a local ordinance violation ticket, which will, which they can also give a warning ticket on. And so while we want to increase the safety in the El Fresco zone, we want to do so in a friendly manner. We want to make sure that our officers have the proper discretion to determine whether a warning ticket versus something stricter should be issued. And also then we have a little bit more control over what the outcomes of those situations are via a public hearing, an administrative adjudication versus going to county court. That's the first part of this. The second part of it, if you recall, back in May, the village board passed the ordinance relating to putting new rules in effect for our parking facilities. And as we were going through this and getting set to begin enforcement of it, we realized there was a drafting oversight where the language should have read, people violating, referring to people violating section H or I. It simply said section I. And what that refers to is there were two principal things that we were regulating in the ordinance. One was prohibiting individuals from trespassing by using the facility for something other than traveling in a vehicle, entering or exiting a vehicle, or traveling to a bicycle or to or from bicycle rack, and leaving public, their personal property in a public parking facility. And the way that the ordinance was drafted, it inadvertently had left out section H, and that was not our intent. And so we did a lot of work to kind of set ourselves up for the implementation and enforcement of this ordinance, which we'll be able to do in earnest beginning tomorrow if this ordinance is passed. But we wanted to make sure that everything was very clear and all our i's were dotted and our t's were crossed before we did that, and we want to correct this error.
Thanks, Mr. Reckless. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Schwingback?
Thank you, Mayor. And Randy, if I understand this correctly, besides the safety, as you mentioned, in the El Fresco zone of our residents with bikes riding through, it's really the safety, as I understand this too, of bicycle riders who are riding up and down our parking garage. So it's really to protect not only all of our residents, but the bicyclists as well.
The bicyclists as well, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Then trustee Shirley?
Yeah, Randy, what's the nature of the violations in El Fresco? Is it violations of the rules of the road in, on those streets? I'm just trying to get a feeling for what is the nature of the violations that occurred in that area?
Well, those are, they would be riding their bicycles on a pedestrian way. And we're kind of saying that when we're setting up our downtown in a, you know, Fresco mode, if you will, those areas are a pedestrian way. And typically, you're not supposed to ride your bikes on a pedestrian way.
Okay, so the streets become pedestrian ways, much like a sidewalk in a neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question is just kind of general is, and this is not applied to El Fresco, but are bikers supposed to observe the rules of the road when they're on the road?
Yes.
Okay, there's no exceptions?
Correct.
I mean, if they're cruising along and they don't want to stop at a stop sign, because it happens all the time, and then they scream stuff at you and they give hand signals and I'm just always curious, they're supposed to stop at a stop sign, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just, it doesn't seem like they do very often, so that's just me, so.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yeah, I just, in reference to the El Fresco, I just want to make comment because I am down there often, as you know, I live down there and take my walks through there or stop and grab something to eat. But the restaurant owners down there and the business owners down there have, they always stop me and say, what can we do about these bike riders? And, you know, we were all teenagers and we all rode in packs on our bikes, but when they come storming through sometimes on those bikes and, you know, grandma who's 70, 80 wants to enjoy that type of thing, and I've seen people almost get hit and it's just an accident waiting to happen, you know, for somebody to, you know, and even, even this old man almost was hit once. So that, I'm very comfortable with this.
Okay, anything further from the board? Mr. Moons?
Thank you, President Hayes. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on what this exactly meant. I would add too, that I would ask the police department if they could monitor the speeding on the streets, because when you're riding your bike on the street, you can get whizzed pretty easily. So to put some kind of speeding control on some of these streets, and also ticket parking in bike lanes, as we see in Sigwalter, there's parking up and down in bike lanes as well. So that's kind of the other, the other flip side of this, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to address the board on this? Seeing none, if no further comments from the board, trustee Baldino?
I was just going to make a motion.
Please.
I would move approval of the proposed amendments to chapter 18, article six, section 18-601, section 18-602, and chapter 18, article two, section 18-216.
Second.
Motion by trustee Baldino, second by trustee Schwingback. Any further questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Move then to the report of the village manager. We do have two items to consider tonight. First is going back to the 2023 Annual Action Plan and proposed substantial and other amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Do we need to do anything other than approve?
Once again, I'll defer to Mr. Perkins. I hope he won't highlight anything.
Yes, we just need an approval from the board. So staff is recommending that the proposed 2023 Annual Action Plan, including the CDBG budget for the next federal fiscal year, and the substantial amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan be approved and then submitted to HUD for their review and approval. We're also asking and recommending approval of a budget transfer of $56,500 from the CDBG CV3 Public Services account to the CDBG CV3 Public Facilities account. And those actions, if the board approves, will effectuate the plan that we've talked about over the last two public hearings.
Okay, can we do those in one motion? Do we need two separate?
Yeah, if the board would like, you could combine that into a single motion.
Okay.
I'll try it.
Can we just say so moved? Have you got it, Nicole?
I think I do. Okay. I move to approve the proposed 2023 Annual Action Plan, including the CDBG budget and the substantial the CDBG budget and the substantial and other amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan be adopted, including any amendments made during the public hearing and transmitted to HUD for the review and approval. In order to effectuate the reallocation of CDBG CV funds, it is further recommended that the board approve a budget transfer of $56,500 from CDBG CV3 Public Services. Do I need to read the other numbers? Okay. To CDBG CV3 Public Facilities.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, seconded by trustee Bertucci. Any further questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Yes. All right, well, just a final thank you to Charles and Nora Boyer in the back there. Thank you, Nora, for all your hard work on this. I know it's a labor of love for you. And so we very much appreciate your hard work as always on this. And it's always sigh of relief for you when you finally get it done. So thank you. All right, let's move on to the last item, and that's the Polco National Community Survey results. Mr. Reckless?
Thank you, Mayor. Back when we set our 2022 to 2023 strategic priorities, the board made it one of the priorities to increase communication with residents. And then in our business plan that followed that, we put in a project to introduce a scientifically valid community survey of residents to be issued every two years on a recurring basis to kind of help inform the annuals or the biannual strategic priorities process. We've obviously done other surveys before. We've done some broad-based ones. We've done some issue-specific ones, and we've done ones on a biannual basis related to our capital plan. And this is unique because this is designed as to be a regular, broad-based survey that covers a number of factors in our community. And so it can be compared not only to other peer communities around the country, but also, and most importantly, I would suggest, over time. And so we can really see over time what direction we're headed in various factors. And since this is the first year, the results, you know, they're still going to be very interesting and insightful. But one thing I would stress is that the real value of this is seeing where we go in the future. And, you know, there's going to be ups and downs. And while the results are very positive this year, it's possible that the next round, we might be a little bit down or a little bit up. And we don't want to overreact to that, too. And so this is just very much the beginning of a journey. But we think this is a really powerful tool. It's a great way to hear where our residents are on a variety of issues. And then on top of that, I'll just, we're not going to go over this tonight, but we, I do want to plug that as part of our subscription to this service, we are able to do a number of other one-off surveys throughout the year using their platform. And so we're very excited about this. We think this is going to be a great tool. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Joe Delio, who is from Polco, to talk about what we found with this year's survey.
Beautiful. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. And I thank Mr. Village Manager for that introduction. Again, my name is Joe Delio. I'm a senior survey associate with Polco National Research Center. I'm delighted to be here this evening to talk through Arlington Heights' results to the National Community Survey. And I am even happier to be here in person from our headquarters of Madison, Wisconsin. I do feel I should preface, especially being in the village, that I am not a Packers fan. I never have been a Packers fan, and there is no conflict of interest there in these results. I do also want to go ahead and thank Ms. Avis Mead, who was our primary contact for this project, was vital for the success of this project. So thank you for all of your hard work on that. And I would also like to acknowledge my colleague, Jason Newmeyer, who was the primary project manager for this go-around of the NCS. So a little bit about us, National Research Center has been the premier provider of these survey services for local government for the past 25 years. Our founders quite literally wrote the book on these types of surveys. I just got my hand on a copy, saving it for a rainy day. And we do have longstanding partnerships with both ICMA as well as National League of Cities. In 2019, we merged with Polco, which is an online civic engagement platform, so we can better service the local government and residents that we work with. And before diving into the results, I want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that these can be used. Most commonly, jurisdictions we work with use this data to monitor trends and resident opinion over time, measure government performance and ratings in public trust, and inform budgeting processes as well as strategic planning. And we also do allow the jurisdictions we work with to benchmark to other communities across the nation, which I'll touch on in a little bit. But our hope really is that these findings, as they're presented, will spur ideas for things that could be used with these results, and then also areas that we might want to dig a little deeper into. So the National Community Survey, or the NCS, as I'll most commonly refer to it as, is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey that allows municipalities to assess resident opinion about their community and local government. It's centered around what we refer to as these 10 facets of community livability. These are the areas of life identified by survey researchers as those that we believe really create quality places, communities that folks want to live in. So the general flow of the presentation, but also the reported results, is centered on these 10 facets of community livability. And we also do find that it aligns nicely with different departments. So when department heads are looking for information most pertinent to them, they can go to that area of the report. Getting into the methodology that we use, this is the first time that the village has conducted the NCS. We did run it earlier this year between March and May. And as we briefly touched on before, we employed a probability-based random sample. So instead of sending the survey to all of the households within Arlington Heights, we collected all of the addresses according to the U.S. Postal Service, geocoded them to ensure that we're looking only at those addresses defined within the village. And then from there, we have a randomization process in which we selected 2,800 households to receive the survey. From there, once we had those households, they received multiple points of contact, the first of which being a pre-notification postcard, just letting them know that the survey was going on, giving some background information, and a URL to respond online. We followed that up with a physical survey packet that had an introductory letter, as well as a physical survey with postage-paid return envelope, as well as URL to respond online. So everybody had the ability to respond online or with the physical survey. I do want to note that the survey itself was translated into Spanish, and direct links were provided, taking those who wished to conduct the survey in Spanish directly to that translated version. So of the 2,800 households that received the survey, we received back 523 total responses. This correlates to about a 19% response rate at a plus or minus 4% margin of error. And I do want to note that this is slightly above average for what we would expect for the NCS. On average, we see closer to a 15% response rate at a plus or minus 5% margin of error. And so just wanted to point that out as we look at that number, help contextualize it a bit. And then along with that random sample survey, we did have a separate survey effort that was open to the community at large. This received 343 responses. It is included in the report. At the very end, is reported on separately from that random sample and those responses. It is worth noting that both of these efforts, efforts, excuse me, were statistically weighted. So we refer back to census data, looking at the demographics that make up the village as a whole. And we can consider some responses more than others to make sure that we're getting a good representative look into those demographics of the village. And as noted before, one of the advantages that local government have in participating in the NCS is being able to benchmark the results and the opinions given in Arlington Heights to communities across the nation. This is born out of the finding that over time, there are certain areas that tend to receive higher results, more positive feelings from the community. Let's say fire services compared to other areas that tend to just generally have lower or less positive results, let's say, street-related services. So instead of comparing fire and street, we can look at those fire services in Arlington Heights compared to fire services in other communities across the nation. And similarly, that with street-related services. And I do think it's worth noting as well that we have over 600 communities in our database that represent over 50 million residents across the country. Unfortunately, we don't have all communities in the U.S. I hope someday we will be able to say that we can. But generally, I like to say that the communities that are in our database are high-quality communities. These are communities that care about resident outreach, want to hear feedback from the residents. And so instead of thinking of Arlington Heights as being compared to all jurisdictions or all communities, it's being compared to other high-performing communities. We do have a breakdown of where we have these communities regionally as well. Most proportionally, we are, have resident voices in the Midwest as well as the West, followed closely by the South. And a few other data points referring to benchmarking. As of 2022, we have perspectives gathered from over 3,400 individual survey implementations with over 1,200 unique jurisdictions. And the residents in these communities evaluated the same kinds of topics as can be found in the National Community Survey. And we do want to make sure that that benchmarking data is up to date and fresh. So we only refer back to responses in the past five years, nothing outside of that five-year mark. And we do have a number of different types of communities, most notably, around 11% are counties, the rest of which are cities, towns, and villages. So the vast majority are these cities, towns, and villages. And getting into an overview of survey results, we do ask two questions directly related to these 10 facets of community livability. The first question asks residents to rate the overall quality of these 10 facets. And then we do ask individual items underneath these. But we can see compared to the benchmarks, we have that color coordinated, and then we show the percent positive. And that's the general flow of the report and presentation. Here we can see that the majority are ranked either similar or higher than the national benchmarks for those 10 facets of community livability. And then we do also ask a second question, asking folks to rate the importance level that they place on these items. And we can see this similar layout here as well. And together, we use this to build what I think is the aptly named Quality and Importance Matrix. And this chart is just one of the many ways to interpret data. It can be used to identify key findings and help a community determine which areas may need additional focus or resource allocation in the coming years. And I have that bottom-right quadrant start off. That's that quadrant that, relatively speaking, contains items or facets that are higher in importance and lower in quality. I do think it's also worth mentioning that the thresholds are individual to each community, so that's not nationally. So we can see that, for example, the quality level of being high-quality threshold around 85% is singular to Arlington Heights. And of the 122 survey items that residents provided evaluative ratings for, 51 items received ratings that were higher than the national benchmarks, and 71 received ratings that were similar to the national benchmarks. There were no individual items that were lower than the national average. Ratings are considered similar if they are within 10 points of the national average, and higher or lower if they are more than 10 points different from that average. And moving into key findings, this is what stuck out to us as survey researchers. Y'all, being the experts of your community, I'm sure there are many, many other highlights to be gleaned as you parse through the data. But our first key finding is Arlington Heights residents experience high quality of life and a strong sense of community. About nine in 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall quality of life in Arlington Heights. Arlington Heights is a place to live as well as a place to raise children. Each of these three ratings were higher than the national averages. Similarly, a high proportion of respondents indicated that they would recommend living in the village for those who asked and do plan on living here for the next five years. Our second key finding, residents generally feel safe in Arlington Heights, though continue to prioritize safety within the community. And safety remains a top priority for residents, with most residents rating this facet as being of high importance. Around 92% of folks rated this as essential or very important to focus on in the coming two years, though with the facet overall noting that folks give 88% excellent or good ratings to the overall safety of the village. So considering that high importance level, it was just about an equal quality level as well. Most residents reported feeling safe in the community during the day, 96% very or somewhat safe, which was on par with communities nationwide. And a similar number of residents reported feeling safe in the downtown and commercial areas during the day. We can see a strong proportion from fire flood, natural disaster, excuse me, natural disaster, as well as from both property and violent crime. These were all similar to the national benchmarks. And those feelings were not only for safety overall, but towards the safety-related services in the village. Ratings for fire services, ambulance, emergency medical services were rated positively by nearly all residents, followed very closely by police services, fire prevention, education. These were also similar to the national benchmarks. Our third key finding, Arlington Heights' educational cultural opportunities are a valued aspect of the community. And to sum this up, this facet scored very well. All items pertaining to the education, arts, and culture in the village scored above natural averages. We can see this is related to education, K through 12 education, as well as adult educational opportunities, being, both being over eight and 10, positively responded by residents, as well as the opportunities to attend special events and festivals, overall community support for the arts, as well as opportunities to attend cultural, music, and art activities. Very strong ratings by the community. And along with the standard questions, there is a space on the NCS for custom questions, one of which the village asked, asked folks to, excuse me, lost my spot, apologies. One of the custom questions that the village added relates to this facet of education, arts, and culture, and it asked residents about village event attendance. So of the items that we provided for ratings, the strongest or the highest proportion of residents reported to attending the Arlington El Fresco at-door dining experience, right around seven and 10. From there, we see closer to five and 10 to a third of residents. That includes the Sounds of Summer, Harmony Fest, Autumn Fest, and Tree Lighting at Harmony Park. And we saw the lowest attendance to the Open House with Police, Fire, and Public Works. And with all of these, I think it's worth pointing out as well that at least one in 10 residents at a minimum were not aware of each of these major events hosted by the village, indicating a potential area of focus to help improve this already strong facet of livability. Our fourth key finding, residents appreciate many aspects of the local economy, though show concern about general affordability and their own personal economic outlook. Residents indicated that the local economy should continue to be a top priority, similar to safety, with over nine in 10 rating it as essential or very important for the coming two years. Nearly 90% of residents also provided favorable reviews of the village's overall economic health, a result that was higher than the national average. And when asked about the village as a place to work, and the village as a place to visit, residents responded with about 74% and 76% excellent or good ratings. And many other ratings of relating to the economy were higher than comparison communities. This included overall quality of business and service establishments, as well as the variety, vibrancy of downtown and commercial area, as well as shopping opportunities in the village. Now, residents were less optimistic about their own economic outlook. And when asked what impact, if any, they thought the economy would have on their family income in the next six months. in the next six months. Around 17% reported that they felt it would be very or somewhat positive. Similarly, when asked to rate the cost of living, around 4 and 10 residents responded positively, around 3 and 10 to the availability of affordable, quality housing. We did see over half of residents have positive views towards the availability of employment opportunities. Now, I want to point out here as well, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we have seen similar trends across the nation. We can see that these are all similar to the national averages. Over the past two years especially, I've seen that economic outlook drop into the 20s or teens in a number of communities. And we've also seen the trend of affordable, quality housing going down, as well as cost of living. That's something that we have seen on the national level. And one area of large-scale economic development in the near future for the village is obviously the Arlington Park Redevelopment Plan. And the village asked another custom question here regarding the accessibility of information about the redevelopment plan and whether or not residents were seeking out and getting information that they needed about this plan. First, residents were asked in question 14 about whether or not they had visited the village's Arlington Park Redevelopment website. About 21% of residents said that they had visited this page. And of the 79% who reported to have not visited the page, over 2/3 of them reported that they weren't aware of the website itself. Approximately 1/4 of residents who hadn't visited the page said they weren't aware of the project overall. And about 5% listed "other" as the reason. So in an important aspect, as this project continues forward, we know that it'll be important for the village to present information and driving engagement with residents with this website, with something that we can help track moving forward as well. And again, this is just what stood out to us as survey researchers as being interesting. Many, many more highlights to be gleaned as you parse through this data. And without beating around the bush and being frank, especially with seeing ratings as strong as Arlington Heights, I do want to note that it's still worth going through this data and having discussions about what's surprising, areas that we can dig in deeper to glean some more information, and then also to look for some of those focus areas. As the village manager mentioned before, with your ongoing subscription to Polco, we do have a library of over 100 surveys and polls that are at the ready to be deployed into the community. And we actually have over 800 community members that have subscribed to the village's profile on Polco. So these are 839 folks that have given us their email address and want to be notified when there's more surveys or polls that they can help with the village. From there, I definitely stop, want to stop for any questions, and I'm happy to filter through to any of the data that we talked through here.
All right. Well, thanks to you and your team for this very worthwhile effort for our community. I say it all the time that the quality of life in Arlington Heights is second to none, and that Arlington Heights is a great place to raise a family. And so it's very comforting to see that 9 out of 10 residents who completed the survey agree with those assessments. And so I very much appreciate the validation of what I've observed over the number of years that I've been representing this community. And so thank you very much for your assistance with that. With that, I'll turn it over to the board for questions or comments. Anybody from the board? Mr. Recklos, any comments from you?
You know, there's a lot of data in there. And, you know, I would, you know, they were, we only asked them to do the highlights. I would encourage all of you to take a look at it. There's some really good stuff, and we're going to be, as staff, looking into this more deeply. And obviously, as we look at what the priorities of the community should be in the next two years, this is a really good resource. We also can do things such as cross-tabulations and so forth, you know, and compare answers. So it's a lot of things that we can do, and, you know, we're only just getting started. So we welcome any thoughts or feedback that you all have offline as well.
Great, great. Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. I have just a couple comments and a question. You answered my question. I was interested to see if the 19% response rate was typical or not, and I appreciated hearing that it was a little higher than average. And I know the whole idea of this is to monitor trends over time and see what happens with that, but I had two questions. How did you come up with the 10 facets of community livability? Did that come from a different source, or is this your own? Where did those 10 facets come from?
Yes, Ms. Board Member, that's a great question. I'll definitely be sure to follow up, but I believe it is proprietary. So we've structured the NCS in different ways over the years. In just my tenure at Polco National Research Center, I think we're on our second or third. Something that we want to make sure is up to date and current, so we're getting the best data for residents. I believe we started with a, I think it was around seven or eight, and we realized that to do better justice to these areas, we expanded them out and gave separate areas to these, each individual 10 facets, to make sure that we weren't skipping over anything that would be vital information.
Thank you. I would be interested to hear what different sources maybe were used to determine what were those 10, if you do find that out. That's interesting to me. Thank you. And I know that we were above average in a number of the comparisons, but was there anything that stood out specifically to you in this initial survey about Arlington Heights, or not really?
That's a great question as well, and it really is something that is, I would say, individual to each community from a national standpoint, especially coming off of the past two years and everything that went on in the past two years. I'll leave it at that. There are certainly some national trends that we saw, though I wouldn't necessarily say that we adhered perfectly to those national trends or we went against them. And to be more specific, there are certain areas such as mobility. Folks are returning back to the offices. They're seeing the roads for the first time, well, with new eyes for the first time in a few years. And so we have seen those mobility numbers go down nationally. Similarly, with health services, we've seen folks who didn't have access to healthcare providers are suddenly getting access, and their longer wait times and/or they're experiencing that with new eyes. So from the national level, those are some areas that stuck out as interesting. I know we're, we've had some discussions with Ms. Mead and a few other staff members. I'm sure we'll have some continued conversations. So I can suggest some of those national trends, but really, knowing what's going on in the community, being the experts of the community, I think you all will find those specific points of interest.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could, Mayor.
Sure.
Just to further answer your question, Trustee Grassi, a couple of things that stood out to us, you know, when you have the questions where you see where you rank percentile-wise, just a couple of them that I thought were very noteworthy. Vibrancy of downtown commercial area out of 300 communities that were suspended, we're in the 98th percentile. So that means there's only 2% of the communities that were ranked higher than us. The well-planned residential growth, 96th percentile. And then, interestingly enough, adult educational opportunities was 97%. And the one that was the highest, even though it doesn't pertain to us, I did share it with our partner, we were at the 100th percentile for quality of our library, which is no surprise. But we did share the parks and educational and library information with our community partners.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, well, thank you again, Joe. And I want to also thank Avis Mead for being our staff representative in assisting with this effort. And so thank you to everyone involved in giving us this very valuable information. So we look forward to working with you down the road.
Well, I want to just thank you again for allowing me to come to your beautiful community, and I look forward to our continued partnership.
All right. Thanks, Joe. All right. Anything further from the village manager?
Nothing this evening.
Anything from the board under petitions and communications? Seeing none, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
By Trustee Tenali, suggested by Trustee Schringbeck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed. Thank you all for joining us this evening.